Yes, Mr. Bakers.
Well, good afternoon. Before the short adjournment, my lord asked me whether there was anything in the judgment really that dealt with the second strand as identified by the learned judge in the first paragraph of his... or second paragraph, rather, of his judgment, namely the strand that the defendant failed in any event to respond adequately to the deterioration in TH's behaviour by providing adequate support or referring to outside agencies, including mental health services. And the question was asked, where in the judgment does the judge make any finding on that other than that in the middle of paragraph 57? And I promise to deal with that after the adjournment. And can I take the court to page 47 of the supplemental bundle? Of the call bundle, thank you pardon. And we say that, in essence, the generality of paragraph 56 does deal with that point from the second sentence. Where the learned judge says it's clear that the senior staff at the school were aware of TH's difficulties and the deterioration in his behaviour. They were aware of the incidents on the 22nd of September and the 5th of October. It is clear that significant steps were taken to help TH and the family in the minutes of the meetings which I've seen, there are references from time to time to CAMHS early help, family support, RESOLVE, Hype, the youth offending team, crisis intervention, the school councillor, outreach intervention, one-to-one youth work, early break and strengthening families. In relation to some of these, I have no evidence as to what, if anything, was done, whether the referrals were followed up or what the result was. In relation to some, it's clear that TH did not wish to engage. However importantly, there was some evidence of improvement before this incident, in particular the meeting on the 22nd of October was relatively encouraging. So we say that is relevant to the... That is all a finding that goes to answer the question posed by the second strand.
Yes, that's helpful, thank you. But would you accept that that is all looking at it in terms of the duty of care to TH rather than the duty of care to the claimant?
My lord, the duty of care to the claimant must involve him being protected from a pupil who might cause him harm. And the way that that is done is to ensure that that pupil has access to the help that it is hoped will assist his behaviour. The way that the school deals with or executes its duty or fulfils its duty of care to the claimant, one might suggest that these options either remove the child from the school, and that is pursued in this view. So the child stays in the school. Next, ensuring that the claimant himself has the techniques to safeguard himself. And that's a training point. Making sure that he has the appropriate techniques to deal with incidents as they arise. And in fact, he has already shown in the incident of the 22nd of September, he was carrying out something called the rap technique on the first pupil who was throwing cuthery. Now, it may be that in these circumstances there, it is impossible to ensure complete safety. But once you take out of the equation the possibility of removing the child altogether from the school, then training is a very good way of minimising risk. And this claimant had been taught the technique called Team Teach, which was a training programme since his time at the school. He was also somebody who had formerly served in the military and taught judo in spare time. So he is not an incapable man. And his last Team Teach training session was on the 2nd of November 2015. So that is one of the ways in which the school modifies the risk to the claimant and fulfils its duty of care to him.
No mention of that in the judgment, of course.
My lady, I think those were uncontroversial points. I don't think there was ever any challenge to that.
No, but there's no finding by the judge that the Team Teach meeting on the 2nd of November was something that helped to ameliorate the risk?
I accept, my lady, had it been a judgment twice as long, that may well have found its way in. I think that there was no dispute that that had happened. There was no dispute that Team Teach was the framework within which the staff were trained to address the behaviour of pupils who were becoming agitated.
But there's no suggestion that this incident was in any way the fault of the claimant or that he acted inappropriately on the day? Or indeed that anybody managing the incident on the day acted inappropriately? The question was whether it was an incident that could have been headed off at the past, in the vernacular, as a result of these various steps?
Yes.
And what we have is various references to various organisations. The judge saying he's got no evidence as to what, if anything, was done, whether the referrals were followed up or what the result was. However, there was some evidence of improvement before the incident and he refers to one particular meeting. Do we have the evidence to which he refers?
Yes, my lady, it's right at the back of the bundle. It's the TAC, the back of the supplemental bundle.
Yep.
It's the TAC meeting of the 22nd of October 2015. And if I may, I might... It's at page 5383 of the supplemental bundle. And this passage of documents from page 372 onwards, I may spend a little bit of time on to demonstrate the agency referral and the efforts that were being made from the time that TH was first becoming particularly distressed. Bear with me two seconds, forgive me turning my back. Because my lady has asked me to go to the 22nd of October document first, I will. As I say, that's it.
Well, I don't want to take you out of your way if you'd rather deal with it in sequence than...
It may be helpful if I do, because I think that that will give the court the best picture from the documents that are used.
Anyway, you say that that is the document that the judge is referring to when he says that there's evidence of improvement.
Yes, and I'll draw the court's attention to that in a moment. So the first document then, which we see is at page 372. And to put this in context, this is dated the 13th of July 2015. This is 11 days, sorry, four days after TH turns 13. And it is nine days before his father sadly dies. He has also, court will have seen, suffered, already suffered, I think at the beginning of that year, the death of his grandfather, which is another bereavement that had an effect on him. This is a team around the child meeting. And it is also worth pointing out that this is not just the staff from this school who are engaged with this. We have also on the people present in this meeting, you will see that there is a Myra Burke, the Director of Inclusion from Older Hill School. That was the lead school that was overseeing the care of this family, or at least that was the school that was the... Yes, the lead school, which is the focus of the team around child meetings because TH's older brother, I believe, attended that school. So we have on this date the Assistant Head Teacher from Brown Hills. We have TH's mother. We have a Director of Inclusion from Older Hill School. We have a family support worker and a mentor. And over the page, well, at the very bottom of the page, there is an update from the school. Travis's behaviour, TH's behaviour has continued to cause concern. As identified in the action plan, so there are action plans being prepared, I've completed referrals to Crisis Intervention, Donna, and Donna is a councillor, and also to our school councillor, Paula. They've met and spoken with TH. No feedback from Donna. Paula has twice tried to get TH to agree starting work with her, but he doesn't wish to. This is surprising. Attendance gradually failing. At the bottom of that paragraph, the door is still open for us to work with Matthew Moss High School to try to move TH in. But for the moment, transition has to stop as the school is too busy and TH has not been settled enough, really. That is a mainstream school. And there was still at the end of this term the hope that TH would be able to progress to that school. It's also worth pointing out that, as Valerie Bebington says in her witness statement, perhaps as a marker of TH's uneven presentation, he had been chosen to present a bunch of flowers at the end of that term to a departing teacher. She described him as a lovely boy with whom she got on well. So there is an unevenness in his presentation. The next paragraph, under the heading Home, sets out a sad picture, but in a pattern of ups and downs, perhaps in keeping with what I've just said. It's very difficult for the mother to manage. They can both be very manipulating and controlling. Both, and this is referring to both TH and his brother, have displayed hugely aggressive outbursts in recent months. I pause there and say that hugely aggressive was a phrase that kept being put to particularly Mr. Cox, the defendant's education, the respondent's educational expert in cross-examination. And while there may have been at one stage a suggestion that this was an appropriate description of his behaviour at school, the reality is that this is the time when, this is the mention of this phrase in relation to him and it appears to be confined to home. Mother has difficulties with alcohol, the parents are separated. There is a boyfriend of the mother who, with whom TH had a troubled relationship. It says there that mother shared that recently TH had found his dad very ill. When he went to visit, TH had been distressed, having to call an ambulance for him. And it says at the end of that paragraph, mother continues to abstain from alcohol. And then there's a family support input. Louise has recently been allocated, has not yet started to work with the family properly. She listened to reports and could see there was need for support with the family group dynamics and relationships. She will investigate if Hype can offer bereavement support for the children who lost their grandad and are concerned for their dad's health, share attachment disorder issues. At the bottom of that paragraph, the last three lines of that paragraph, Roe, who's the Deputy Head Teacher or the Assistant Head Teacher at Brown Hills, before closing, Roe suggested that CAMHS, Child and Adolescent Mental Health Services, sometimes do family group work and felt this might be worth exploring. Before closing her case, former family support worker Michelle Stock made a referral to RESOLVE. And I'll come on to, in a moment, to what RESOLVE is, and Louise will follow this up. What are your, summary of the meeting, what are your conclusions? Separate notes regarding the siblings. Overall, the team around child were all very concerned for the family, looking forward to summer break. Last three lines of that paragraph, mum described some improvement in their interactions. He's always been the loving and protective one. He's presently very closed up and keeping his emotions bottled. We agree that his rejections of one-to-one support may in fact be due to being afraid of opening up. So pausing, and then, sorry, in the box below that, there's an action plan. Assistant Head Teacher to follow up with Donna, the councillor from Crisis Intervention. It's still hoped that TH can move to mainstream school in September. Assistant Head Teacher is going to update the new welfare lead for her school, who will take over the case as of September. Mum is going to continue to rebuild her loving relationship with TH. And the family support worker will look into referrals to CAMHS, RESOLVE and Hype. It is, we say, significant, if I may pause there, that the learned judge says, if I can take the court back to page 44 of the call bundle and paragraph 43. Fifth, it is the school's response to the deterioration in TH's behaviour which is the focus of this claim. There's no pleaded case against any other agency for which the defendant might have been responsible. Indeed, there is no good evidence before me that any of the agencies to which references made in the records were in fact the defendant's responsibility as opposed to outside agencies. So where we have, for instance, the references to Crisis, to RESOLVE, to Hype, to CAMHS, these are in the main agencies to which, external agencies for which the school itself cannot be held responsible. And part of the problem, as we shall see, appears to be either that TH would not engage, particularly he wouldn't engage with, I think at least three, possibly four councillors, not including the bereavement councillor. Another part of the problem was that, we say, it must have been out of the school's hands, referrals to, by social workers and family support workers and so on, to agencies such as CAMHS could not be actioned instantaneously. And the court will remember that I was discussing before the short adjournment, the short timescale between particularly the first trigger incident of the 22nd of September and the 3rd of November, when TH was at school for only eight days in total. So there's a very limited opportunity for the school to take the steps that it was trying to take to help him out and to make him better. But as we shall see, the school did make those efforts and continue to make them and indeed accelerated or increased those efforts over the period. So that document that we've just looked at is the TAC meeting from the 13th of July, just as the school term ends and just nine days before TH's father sadly dies. The next meeting minutes are at page 375. From the 14th of August 2015. These are monthly minutes that we see progressing all the way through. What we don't have in the bundle is the one that comes after the incident, but that's less important. But we do have the one to which I've just already alluded, the 22nd of October, shortly before the material incident. So in October 15, some three weeks after TH's father has died, again, the Assistant Head Teacher from the school in the middle of the summer holidays and the Director of Inclusion at the older brother's school and mother meet Louise Sunderland, the family support worker is unable to attend. This is what we can see on page 375. And then the school update. TH's behaviour continued to be a cause for concern for the last couple of weeks of the term. Incidents included, over the page at top of 376. Peevishness, walking off with table tennis bats when he'd lost so no one else could play, locking himself in the music room, aggressive outbursts, lots of wandering in school, including in lesson time, assault on another young person leading to exclusion for the rest of that day, stealing a drink from a subway whilst out on a rewards end of term treat. Overall attendance has dropped. Next paragraph. TH has refused to work with Paula, our school councillor. I also made a referral to Crisis Intervention. Donna spoke to TH and offered to work with him, but he said no, as he said he didn't need help. At the end of term, no further progress has made regarding transition to Matthew Moss, that's the mainstream school. This should be looked at again in September. And Roe Bamford shares that Laura Coe will be replacing her as the Assistant Head in September. And then the salivating of the death of TH's father. The school again involved, well, it's the older child's school involved. Myra has since sent in referrals for bereavement counselling for both boys. Suzanne, who's the bereavement councillor, has already made contact and will commence working with the boys in the new school term. Mum shared that the boys took the shocking news really badly. TH has been very needy with her sleeping in her bed for the last three weeks. She feels that, I don't quite know what those next two words are meant to signify. But presumably she feels distraught or worse than that effect by the bereavement and they've all been very caring towards her. She reported that Paula, the Brown Hills school councillor, had rung her to offer condolences and support, which she appreciated. We discuss the concern that CAMHS have said that all three children are likely to have attachment type disorder traits due to past history and how this latest event may deepen their difficulties. Now, I accept that that is a slightly ambiguous sentence. It's not clear whether it is CAMHS saying that the latest event may deepen their difficulties and therefore indicative that CAMHS have been involved since the 22nd of July. But it could mean that. Mum is really concerned that she may not be able to cope without strong support. Reference to a family holiday. And then the next paragraph, family support. Louise emailed to say she couldn't attend, this is the family support worker, she couldn't attend the team around child today, the date had been agreed. She had no update to send in other than to say she'd been supporting mum weekly by phone. So there is support going into the family. And there is then concern about that particular support worker and Myra suggests at the bottom of that paragraph that maybe the former family support worker might come back. And then the, an action point, has the referral gone in for the Strengthening Families course for mum and TH? Mum confirmed that a previous worker, Michelle Stock, has made a referral to RESOLVE. Again, we'll come on to what RESOLVE is. Strengthening Families, now this is a six-week course. The evidence was a trial that started on the 16th of September, six days before the first assault, and had finished by the 22nd of October. And it is a course that needed to be passed. This was the evidence of trial. And it was designed to improve relationships within the family. With that, as we say with other forms of the help that's being offered to this family, it must be the case that all of these steps and interventions are designed to assist this child's behaviour and to make this child better and improved and less prone to outbursts. And so it would be artificial to say, well, what's strengthening families got to do with preventing him from, or increasing the safety of staff in the school? The point is that these are all interventions and therapies and forms of outside intervention and training that are designed to make this child a better prospect and to assist him. I don't think I... I will try and speed up because we've only got, I think, three more of these. But after that 14th of August 15 meeting, there is at page 378, the page in Landscape A, an action plan in TAC with the desired outcomes set out, actions set out, who will do this, by when, progress and comment. And we say this is one of the helpful documents which shows that despite what we must concede is a breach by the school, that there are alternative routes by which action plans are being prepared for this child that are designed to assist him. So the action plans are, there's the Strengthening Families course, the first one, further visits from the positive transition to MM is Matthew Moss, the mainstream school. Laura Coe is tasked with looking at that. Improved emotional health. And that's why TH has been referred to an agency called Crisis, an outside agency. Who will do this? Roe Bamford in the school. Though we know that Donna from Crisis has seen TH and he refused to engage. And then a reference to the school councillor, Paula. And it says, progress and comment, Paula will continue to try to engage with TH in September. So counselling is a constant presence at this stage, though there is only so far, it would appear, that councillors can go to ensure that he has the counselling. The next at 379 is the TAC meeting from the 16th of September 2015. So a week or two into term and a week or so before the first assault. Halfway down the page, there's a lot of this that is redacted, but halfway down the page, FSW, which I believe stands for Family Support Worker, to support family weekly visits to provide emotional support for mum to offload. And then over the page is a specific heading for TH. Referral to YOT, that's the Youth Offending Team.
Well, above that, he's very angry at the slightest thing at home.
Yes. Antisocial behaviour reduction aims of work and family support worker to support anger management and emotional support, anger management and emotional support for mum. Now, anger management can only refer to TH because there's no suggestion that mum needs help with anger management.
Well, mum's expressed how worried she is in the next paragraph.
She has, and there a point, a short point arises because Melena Brennan said that it wasn't until trial that he discovered that there were worries about the sort of people who TH was associating with. But it's clearly set out in these two lines, mum very worried about TH and his anger and his negative social groups, friends, and a couple of them are mentioned, things maybe smoking weed. YOT to make referral to Early Break. Now, Early Break, the evidence was, is an agency that is designed to ensure that children who may fall into drug or alcohol or substance misuse are moved out of, off that path.
And YOT is Youth Offending Team?
Youth Offending Team, yeah. So at this stage, shortly before the relevant assault, there is input from a family support worker, youth offending team, and it's hoped that he can be referred to Early Break. There is a, but still, it says that TH tries to sneak into mum's room at night. It's a sad, a sad picture of a very mixed presentation from this young and needy child. But he's kicking off at home, attitude quite demanding at home. And as my lady pointed out earlier on, over the top of the page on 381, Travis, TH not happy at being at babysite. And that's the lower school because he wants to be with his friends in the upper school. And again, a reference then to the youth workers, or I say again, there is a referral to youth workers, TH, before end of week. EWO has not been in school, I'm afraid, I don't know what that...
Educational Welfare Officer.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
Educational Welfare Officer has not been in school. Laura, that's Laura Coe, to refer by the end of week. Strengthening Families started this morning and that's why I said that, I mentioned earlier it started that day. Update, move to Matthew Moss before minutes go out. So again, a recognition of his problems with anger, recognition of difficulties at home, referrals, further referrals to...
Yeah, but the one you skipped over is the bottom of 380, throwing stones at mum. So it's not just anger, it's violence.
Yes, sorry, I certainly didn't mean to skate over that, my lord. But... But that's right. There is behaviour which is troubling, but interventions are being made to try and deal with that. And then we come to the TAC, minutes of 22nd of October 15, which is what we started this passage, because that is what the learned judge was alluding to from the page 383. And we have, on this occasion, the Director of Inclusion, Myra Burke, we have an administrator, Yvonne Townsend from the same school, teaching assistant from that school and mum. And then there are apologies from the family worker, the prevention worker, and another family worker. The review notes, the strengthening families course, this has now been completed and went well. TH has been a bit more forward-thinking, and mum has not had any problems with getting him to school this week. So that is a course that started on the day that the last minutes were prepared, which recorded the throwing stones incident, for instance, and this course which is designed to improve intra-family relations, has now been completed and went well. He's been more forward-thinking. Transition to the mainstream school is still on temporary hold, and so is the bereavement counselling at school. The indications are that that is because he wouldn't engage. Lauren Munguru, she's a prevention officer stroke from the youth offending team, and that is the, somebody who is designed to, whose role is to prevent the child from falling into potentially criminal conduct, is going to try and engage with TH at half-term. The family support worker, Michelle Stott, says that she's continuing to visit mum on a weekly basis, that she's kept me updated regarding where the children are up to. TH seems a little more settled. And then at the bottom, Early Break, one of the agencies to which TH had been referred earlier, TH has engaged with Jamie and went to see him one day last week and also saw him yesterday, so there's encouraging indications of engagement there. And then we have the references to the, what would appear to be the incident, this where confusion seems to have arisen, it appeared to be the incident involving Mr Liptrot, over the page at the top of 384. Update for the next meeting, mum didn't attend two meetings with Laura, that's Laura Coe, to discuss TH as assault on a teacher. Laura Coe met with TH and the teacher involved, so TH could apologise and this could be resolved. I've offered support to mum, but she feels she has enough in place at the moment. Of course, levels of intervention and degrees of intervention, the child are bound to be dictated to a considerable extent by the parent. The youth worker has been in touch with mum, so this one-to-one work should begin soon. Now, an issue arose about whether this was a youth worker that, who was engaged at the school, there was a youth worker called Andy King who was engaged at the school. Valerie Bebington and Laura Coe in particular say that he had a good relationship with TH and was available to speak with TH whenever needed. The youth worker referred to here appears to be an external youth worker, to whom an outside referral was made. That's to be chased up. And then a reference to improved attendance, TH has returned to school, and then a referral to CAMHS. Mum has spoken to the doctor, he is going to do a referral. So importantly, so far as TH's problems stem from a mental health problem, that is debatable, though Miss Fiddler, as we shall see shortly, felt herself able to make a diagnosis that he was disabled by a mental health condition, which is rather at odds with her disavowal of anything other than having a strictly educational role. So far as his condition was caused by a mental health problem, what have we seen by now? By the time that the second, and indeed, the first and second assaults of September and October 15 have occurred? There is a referral, CAMHS have been involved earlier in the year. CAMHS may or may not have commented on the bereavement and had things to say about that. There's a referral to CAMHS at this stage.
By the mother.
By the mother, but...
Not by the school, by the mother. She's taken the initiative.
But, my lady, the, it's very far from clear that the school had the ability to refer And it's pointed out, the merger, that CAMHS, the evidence at trial was that CAMHS has to be referred by the GP, so mum has to do it. And there has been attempts, there have been attempts at involvement from councillors and bereavement councillors from July onwards.
So as far as this meeting is concerned, the improvement amounts to a little bit more forward-thinking, going back to school without having to struggle with mother, and going to see the Early Break person who is targeting the possibility of drugs, and that at home at least, he seems a little more settled.
Yes, my lady, and in these circumstances, those are, it is perfectly reasonable to portray those as valuable prizes. To characterise that as a worthless set of improvements would be difficult in my respectful submission.
It doesn't say anything about his anger management, though.
Well, there's...
It's totally neutral, isn't it? I mean, I'm not saying they're worthless, of course there are improvements in his behaviour in that he's more settled at home, he's going to school, he's thinking a bit more clearly. But whereabouts in here, apart from the fact that he's willing to go and apologise to a teacher he's thrown a mug at, is there anything to suggest that he's got his temper under control?
Well, ladies, the school, the school is doing, in our respectful submission, well the judge is entitled to find that the school is doing the best it can by the referrals to all of these agencies. And...
Doing the best it can for the pupil. Undoubtedly, the school had taken considerable steps to try and assist the pupil and indeed the family more generally. We see ample evidence of that. But that's not the question, is it?
Well, it is part of the question, my lord, because part of the way of making sure that the staff at the school are as safe as they can be is by making sure that the children, you might assault them, have the maximum levels of intervention in order to modify and improve their behaviour. And where, for instance, we've got mum saying that TH has got as much on his plate, or the family's got as much intervention as they can manage at the moment. Paraphrased, but that's the phrase from, I think, the September meeting. It's very difficult to see how the school can force down the throat of the child or the family further therapies that, or interventions that they may be unwilling to accept. And of course, if there was the option in this case of saying, well, in that case, the only thing you can do is to remove the child from the school, then that might be an answer. But that isn't, that isn't a live issue in this appeal.
Yes, and that's a very important point that you make there. But I think maybe just to focus the question a little more. What you've shown us very persuasively is lots of support being provided to the pupil in question and to the family. But what we have as of this state is a situation where this pupil has been involved in, we now see, three acts of violence, throwing stones at his mother, then the incident with the claimant, and then the incident with Mr Liptrot.
Four, the violence to the fellow pupil as well.
Yeah, four if you include the fellow pupil. And where do we see in any of this, any assessment of what to do about future acts of violence, particularly to teachers at the school?
We don't see that in express terms, my lord, it's right to say. But what we do of course have is the school reacting very strongly after this material assault. I entirely take the point that there are, there are a number of acts of violence. We know very little, it's right to say, about the throwing stones at mum, or the, an incident involving another pupil, which, it should be said, resulted in, I say only, one day of exclusion at the end of the previous term. It should also, it's also right to point out that this was a child who had suffered two bereavements in the course of the year. It would not be unreasonable, we say, for the school to conclude that, well, there is a realistic possibility that this will be a temporary exacerbation of his distress that might be expressing itself as in these behavioural ways.
When did the grandfather die?
We believe it's, I think it's earlier in 2015.
Because one of these documents suggests that his behavioural issues start to really escalate from about March, April onwards, and I just wondered if that was consistent with the grandfather.
I don't think we have an express date for that.
It's in one of the most recent ones that you've shown us, that it says that he was, there were no problems at school until March stroke eight.
Yeah, that's the, the TAC minutes of 13th of July. It should also be said that there has been a reference, and the claimant himself referred to this in his witness statement, in his second witness statement, about an incident in which, once TH's father had been diagnosed with cancer, which appears to have been in about April 15, there was an incident off the school premises at home where a knife was produced.
Well, that was the knife incident, yeah. I wondered whether the knife incident was...
Because the other children had said something disobliging about his father, or something that, a comment about his father that had upset him, and that was about the time of the diagnosis. And it's also worth pointing out, there is an express finding from the learned judge that TH was, that a pattern of behaviour had not, was arguably developing, but it has not yet developed, if you forgive me, I'm just looking for the reference. I'll come back to that if I may, but it's what the learned judge also says, the paragraph we've been looking at on page 45 of the court bundle, paragraph 47. About two-thirds of the way down the paragraph, which is below halfway. In my judgment, says the learned judge, it's clear that the school were still trying to work with both him and mum in order to resolve the family's problems. That was not an easy task, given TH's apparent refusal to engage.
It's paragraph 42, by the way, sorry.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, I'm very grateful. It's such, it's fair to say in my judgment that there was no established pattern of violence against teachers, though it's arguable that it was beginning to develop. There's no challenge to that finding. Going back to 47 over the page. Not an easy task, given TH's apparent refusal to engage with the school councillor and crisis intervention. There's no evidence of any violence or threat towards staff at that point. In the circumstances, I'm not persuaded the defendant was in breach of its duty of care either to TH or to the claimant by failing to remove him from the school at or before the end of the school year. Because as I've said earlier, the options in terms of protecting the claimant, fulfilling the school's duty to him, are, remove TH from the school, that's not an option, deal with TH's behaviour, and they're trying to do that. And...
And that's a point well made, if I may say so, but I think the lingering concern I have at the moment is this. The impression one gets, particularly from the contemporaneous documents, is a school striving very hard to support this pupil and the family. And in that regard, behaving entirely, in an entirely praiseworthy and appropriate manner. It might be said that they're so focused on the pupil and providing support and care to the pupil that they've lost sight of the need to support and care for their own staff. What would you say to that?
Well, again, it's a question of balance. If you can address the behaviour at the root, that surely is the best way of protecting the staff member. If you're not going to go to the draconian extent of removing the pupil from the school, that is the option that is taken after the 3rd of November. Then the best way of addressing the behaviour is trying to do things at the root. The best way of protecting the staff member is to address the behaviour. And my submission, the learned judge is well within the ambits of his discretion in finding that that is what the school did. And there are, it's not just the referral to outside agencies as well, because one of the things that I've not perhaps mentioned is communication as another means of protecting the claimant. We were discussing before the shorter adjournment, the claimant's second witness statement. So I'll take the court briefly to that, and then I'll take the court also to levels of intervention by school staff to try and modify TH's behaviour as well, and Laura Coe in particular.
Are we finishing with 388 and the others? Because can I just, inevitably one reads on.
Yes.
Can I just ask, because there's a reference on the 15th of October 2015, which does appear to deal with violence. And Lucy Young is put down as the referrer. Lucy Young being...
Sorry, 388, my lord.
Yeah, 389, sorry.
389. Well, the, precisely, I'm grateful for raising that. This is the family worker, 15th of October, so this is 10 days after the assault on Mr Liptrot. So it would appear that, so there's, yes, there is another referral. This is the referral to the external one-to-one youth worker to assist TH to become engaged in some meaningful activities he can enjoy both inside and outside of school, to address his worsening behaviour. But there's no suggestion that the violence and aggression that are noted there are different to the one, the episodes that we've already been discussing. There's the stone-throwing incident and that's one of the assaults on, or the assault on the 22nd of September and the mug-throwing incident on the 5th of October.
And SIN meeting?
Special Educational Needs.
No.
CIE.
CIE, a big, sorry, a big child in need, I'm so sorry, that is...
Thank you.
Yeah, that's the, that is the next level up of, it's one of the...
From the TAC.
From the CAF, Common Assessment Framework. CIN is child in need, where you are assigned your own social worker. And in fact, my lord, you're right, as I was looking at the TAC documents, and in fact, it naturally perhaps follows on, just to very quickly whizz through those last five pages in the bundle. If I just explain what 385 is. This is a note probably, we think, from Laura Coe. Notes from Lower School PIS, which I think is pupil information sheet. Notes from Lower School PIS, which I think is Pupil Information Sheet. Just a note of what has been the history up to the week beginning the 19th of October. So this looks like a briefing note for the TAC meeting three days later. And that really just repeats the history that we've already seen. Over the page at 386, we are going back in time. This document must come after the 22nd of July, but before the 14th of August. It's the referral to the Child Bereavement Services. And it looks like, over the page, it looks as if this has been prepared by maybe Myra Burke in making the referral for Bereavement Services. The family are named to CSC, Child Social Care, I presume, and have a Common Assessment Framework rating. There is another referral, yet another referral form at 388, dated the 28th of September, for outreach intervention, that is another aspect of social care, of being directed in at the family. Other professionals involved: youth offending team and family support, that's halfway down the page. The last box, what are your concerns? Why do you think this family needs outreach support? Travis is currently subject to the Common Assessment Framework. Next meeting, 7th of October. Mum, later on, desperately struggling at present, and we need some work and intervention to get the kids back into school. TH needs to have a return-to-school intervention before he can come back.
Interview.
Interview, thank you. Mum has family support worker involved. Looks like the head teacher feels at this time that we also have a role. Please arrange a visit with Mum to assess what support is required from us. Chase up the mainstream school regarding the plan for reintegration into their school attendance. So that's yet another referral. We've already looked at 389, at the referral form for a one-to-one youth worker. And at 390 is a document that was prepared by Laura Coe on the day of the first assault, the 22nd of September 2015, expressing, first of all, the first paragraph, the history of the summer, and how TH had been bereaved. And this is in fact, this is a document that perhaps helpfully illustrates what the school was attempting to do itself, but also having to, if you like, juggle too much intervention from the school.
So this was on the day of the assault on Mr...
On the claimant, the first assault on the, of the first violence.
The jumping-on-the-back assault?
Yes, yes.
So although there's no incident report completed, you'd say this covers what would have been picked up on that?
Precisely. And you can see the reference to the incident and the last three lines, three and a half lines of that paragraph. And you can also see the very last words of that page. The TH's, the proposal is, the intention is, that he's been excluded for three and a half days. This incident occurred on a Tuesday afternoon, so that takes him to the end of the week. And is due for a meeting with Mum, presumably and the school, the following Monday, which would be the first day back after that assault. Now, of course, we know that, in fact, TH didn't go to school at all that week, and his first day back, the 5th of October incident occurred, and perhaps supervened in terms of the return to work, return to school. Before, my lord, helpfully reminded me to perhaps just finish off that trail of disclosure, and I apologise for going through it at length, but I think it's very useful because it gives a very good picture of the level of intervention, the level of assistance that the school are involved in presenting or offering to this child over this period in which he's in school for eight days. I was going to also mention information being given to other teachers. And just before the shorter adjournment, I was taking, lords and my lady, to the claimant's second witness statement. Short witness statement, pages 18 and 19 of the supplemental bundle. And paragraphs four onwards. "In contrast to the first statement, where the impression is given that the claimant is looking at the disclosure and noting things that arise from that disclosure, he's now saying, in light of what presumably has been reminded of by Laura Coe's witness statement, that he in fact does recall a number of meetings and offerings of information." Paragraph five, at the bottom of page 18, "I note that Laura Coe comments that TH's move to upper school was put on hold. I was aware of this, as TH would have moved to upper school and become my responsibility. As it was, due to the incident in September 15, which involved him assaulting me, I was aware that the decision was made to hold him back in Lower School. I wasn't involved in the decision-making process. I do recall weekly meetings with Debbie Nebratton and Laura Coe, where we discussed all pupils, and especially pupils like TH, who had things going on in their lives that needed addressing. And here crucially, I recall that the purpose of the meetings was to share information that might have an impact on their behaviour and the safety of other pupils and staff."
And if you read on in that paragraph, it doesn't appear that the meetings had the desired effect, because not everything was conveyed.
Well, I will come straight to that, my lady, because that's an important point. "I was not made aware of some of the more worrying escalators, escalations of his growing violence, such as the fear felt by his family and the knife incident, which was referred to in documents that had been disclosed by the defendant, which I discussed in my earlier witness statement." That's back in April. So, and that is in response to, that's a very specific incident. There's no other intimation that there had been problems.
We know that he didn't know about the incident with the mug either.
He didn't know about the incident with the mug, thank you.
No. It's a bit surprising, really, because what you've got is... I'm making allowances for the passage of time. Of course, witnesses do their honest best to remember, and if you're going back five years, it's difficult. Take that on board. But you've got a preponderance of witnesses who all think that the reparation meeting was with this claimant and not with the other teacher. And then you've got this teacher, who has already been the victim of one assault by this pupil. The pupil then throws a mug at a different teacher on his first day back to school after being excluded for the first incident. And yet, the first teacher doesn't get to know about it, despite these regular meetings which are intended to share information about matters of concern. I find that rather worrying.
Well, my lady, as you say, there is a considerable passage of time.
Well, I thought the point you were making was that there wasn't. The first incident's the 22nd of September. He doesn't go to school the week of the 28th. The next day, he's back, in fact, at school, he throws a mug at the other teacher. And yet, that incident is not drawn to the attention of teacher number one, nor is teacher number one offered any form of reparation, although the headmistress does step in very swiftly to deal with it, with the incident with teacher number two.
Except, my lady, that we do have, I say that, the claimant says that he wasn't aware of the 5th of October incident, but we have the Pupil Information Sheet on page 385, which refers to it. And the point is that Laura Coe's evidence is that these are circulated. And the claimant should have known about them.
We just don't know what it said on it, do we?
Well, this is the pupil information sheet.
Oh, this is what would go to the teachers, is it?
Yes.
Are you sure? Notes from Lower School PIS?
It's the Pupil Information Sheet.
Page 385?
Yes.
You've told me this is a briefing note for a TAC meeting. I wrote that on it when you said so.
I'm told, my lord junior, that that is something that would also be circulated to...
Well, where's the evidence of that? I mean, when we went through this, you told me it was a briefing note for a TAC meeting, and that's what I wrote on it.
Well, can I, if the title, I don't know, I want to be cautious here, that the title is Notes from the Lower School Pupil Information Sheet. And so what it looks like...
Something which has been compiled by reference to a Lower School...
To another document, yeah.
Yes. But you don't know how much of it came from the other document. We don't have the other document.
If we go to page 49 of the supplemental bundle...
I'm a little puzzled by this, I mean, I appreciate this may be something that didn't have the same focus at trial as it does now. But as I understand it, what you're relying upon is the statement to page 385. "We, beginning 5th, 10th, 15th, serious assault on staff happened Monday. A decision made to put TH on interim exclusion under my attending." So that's what the document states. Now, if it was your client's case, that therefore the claimant was aware of the assault, or the mug-throwing incident, presumably that would have been put to the claimant in cross-examination. You knew about this incident, didn't you? And the claimant would have answered, yes, I did, or no, I didn't, as the case may be. And then there'd be a finding of the judge, did he know or did he not know?
That may be right, my lord.
Well, it should be right, and he's pleaded specifically that he didn't know about it, that's the point.
I accept that if it wasn't, if it wasn't put to him, we will try and track that down. Although the cross-examination of the claimant isn't in the bundle, but as a counterweight, a counterbalance, there's page 49 of the supplemental bundle and the evidence of Laura Coe. And I will see in a moment whether this is something that was traversed in cross-examination. She says in paragraph four, "When I took over the role of assistant head of Lower School, I confirmed the claimant was the assistant head of Upper School. I introduced a system of providing weekly bulletins. I was responsible for preparing a weekly bulletin for Lower School, and the claimant was tasked with preparing a weekly bulletin for Upper School." And so on, "I confirm the bulletins were shared with members of staff from both upper and lower school, and were also discussed in weekly meetings. The reports focused on generic issues, including matters pertaining to the timetable of pupil attendance, and also had a section which outlined key messages surrounding specific pupils. Having reviewed the weekly bulletins from the 7th of September, I note that TH has specifically mentioned on a number of them, and so on." And she says, paragraph five, "The contents of the weekly bulletins, as well as being distributed to staff, also formed an agenda item at the weekly meeting which was held between Deborah Nebratton, the claimant, and myself. And all matters pertaining to lower and upper school were discussed." And that's where the claimant says, yes, I do remember those meetings. So there is a, I accept there's an unevenness of evidence there, but I say that it is a, it is not something, it is not an issue on which court can be absolutely clear that there was a clear resolution at that point of whether the claimant himself was aware of the 5th of October incident. And while we don't attempt to characterise it as a minor incident, it was an incident that would have led to an exclusion. The way it is described is that a mug was thrown at a wall. This is Laura Coe, paragraph 11 on page 51.
I'm just looking at what the judge said about this. So he sets out the basic facts at 35, and comments that the defendant, which has made no reference to it, there is a chief, although I understand there's an exception to that. But then he comes back to it. At 52. And it says, "Concern, lack of any record, further indication escalation of behaviour, second-time teacher placed at risk, absence of documentation." And he comments on the restorative meeting. But he doesn't say anything about information about that being circulated.
No, well, perhaps it would have been better if he had addressed that and made a specific finding on it.
Well, he makes a finding that senior staff were aware of the incidents on the 22nd of September and the 5th of October. He makes that finding at the top of 56. But he doesn't make a finding specifically in relation to the claimant. And of course, the claimant undoubtedly denied it and consistently denied it. I haven't been through his cross-examination to see whether it was put to him that he was mistaken about that, and he did know and has forgotten.
My lady, I don't know whether I can assist at all. In my closing submissions, on page 288, I did make the observation that the claimant didn't receive all of the bulletins. And on page 147, I put to Laura Coe that the incident on the 22nd of September didn't appear in the bulletin, which she agreed with.
Yeah.
So we had the bulletins. Because I was able to make the observation that the 22nd of September 2015 incident didn't appear in it. What I can't see is that... Ah, page 148, at F. The answer, this is Laura Coe, "I think I made reference to him going to passages new that week, the week before half-term, I'm sure I did, because he went on a, he had that issue with Christian Liprot. There is no weekly bulletin at all for the 19th. It could have been because they'd gone, they were just going on trips. I do not think, there was no particular reason why, okay." So, and I think that was how it lay. I don't want to obviously say what was in a bulletin, which was in the trial bundle, but there's nothing in there, and it was specifically put that the 22nd of September wasn't in it. It can be checked, but I...
Yes, I think we're more concerned with the incident where the mug was thrown.
My lady, yes. The implication is it wasn't in there, but I don't want to take it any further than that, really.
Well, you point out that you said to the judge in the final speech that not all of them were provided to the claimant.
My lady, no.
But, as my lady has pointed out, top of paragraph 56, "It is clear that the senior staff at the school were aware of TH's difficulties and the deterioration in his behaviour. They were aware of incidents on the 22nd of September and the 5th of October. It's clear that significant steps were taken to help him." And in terms of, in terms of causation, the question might then be asked, well, even if the claimant wasn't aware of the incident on the 5th of October, he was of course aware of the incident which had involved him on the 22nd of September. The, if the notes were being shared in weekly bulletins, but reflected were incident some of the issues in the team around child meetings, then... some of the issues in the team around child meetings, then it's reasonable to assume that the claimant was aware of the difficulties, well, he concedes as much in his second witness statement, he was aware of the difficulties that TH was facing. And that then points towards the events of the day itself, the day of the assault, which is covered by, by the judge, paragraph fifty-eight of his judgment, where he rejects all the allegations that there were any failures at all on the part of the school in terms of dealing with the incident as it arose. This comes back to my latest point in particular about what steps were taken, and indeed, Lord Justice Arnold's point, about what steps were taken to address the claimant's safety rather than TH's wellbeing. And there must be a focus on what happened on the day, because the judge found, in essence, that this was an incident that was properly handled. And he had plenty of information to allow him to do it, the judge had seen the CCTV footage, it formed his impression of the unfolding events. And he gives his detailed breakdown of the event, and what was done, at what stage, and how there was no physical restraint involved before the blow was struck. He finds that the decision not to allow TH access to his belongings and to leave the premises was a reasonable one, it was in line with the school's policy that pupils who misbehaved cannot be seen to be getting their own way, so there's an element of proper imposition of policy there. I reject the claimant's argument that he should have been better briefed as to what had occurred earlier in the incident, this was a fast-moving situation, there was, in my judgment, no reasonable opportunity for him to be properly briefed. In any event, I am confident that had he known of the events that had occurred before he arrived, he would have acted in the same way. And in broad terms, what the claimant did was to, was to stay in a, was to exercise a de-escalating role as best he could, and both he and all others were surprised, very surprised, when the blow fell. Can I deal with a discreet point that was raised, that had been raised by my learned friend and got some traction with my lady before, before the shorter judgment, which is the question of harboring of resentment, and whether it was coincidental that it was the claimant rather than the other members of staff who had been present at the time of the assault on the third of November, who was the victim of the assault. This was only ever a matter of speculation by my learned friend at the trial. In fact, it was specifically put to Miss Fiddler, and she said there's no link, and that is at page one eight seven G. I think my learned friend took court to it earlier, one eight seven G of the supplemental bundle, and the question was asked by Mr Vaughan, so if you have a child that's acting out, and is attacking someone for a reason that's been identified, there's no reason why you would, you'd think he'd then involve himself in an unprovoked attack like he did on the third of November, is there? I don't see, she says, that the two cases are linked. And with the greatest respect to my learned friend, he can't on the one hand say, or the claimant can't rather say, on the one hand, that by exclude, by TH being excluded, he would regard that as a holiday, and on the other hand, suggests that TH might have harbored some resentment against the claimant for getting him excluded. Those two do not sit well.
Well, I don't think it's anything to do with the fact that he got him excluded, that he hadn't been excluded for incident number one. Incident number one, I seem to remember reading that the student's explanation was that he thought that he was being given the evil eye, or he was giving me the evils, or something along those lines, was looking at him in a funny way. And he was also trying to restrain his cousin, so there was a definite reason for him to get involved in the violence on the first occasion, the point that you make. But nothing seems to have been done to explore whether there was any lingering resentment against this particular member of staff. As you say, it could be pure speculation, but it's odd, isn't it, that he's the one person who, although acting entirely appropriately as a teacher, does exactly what the other teachers do, and he's the one who gets hit in the face?
Well, my lady, if I address that in two ways, first of all, there was, in fact, an investigation of whether this was, that the first incident was caused by personal animus of some sort, and that was, that is shown by Catherine Connolly's witness statement to page forty-one of the supplemental bundle. So, page forty-one of the supplemental bundle, that's about five or six lines down from the top of the page. On this occasion, she says, I confirm that TH perceived the claimant to have assaulted his friend when restraining the pupil, and this was a defensive-type activity on the part of TH, and not a personal attack against the claimant. So that, her characterization of that was that it wasn't something that was specifically targeted against the claimant.
That's the first incident.
And my learned junior points me back to page one eight seven of the passage of cross-examination of Miss Fiddler that we were looking at a moment ago, to read the passage before the one I, which I took to court, at B.
Well, Miss Fiddler, with the greatest respect, is in no better position than any of us to speculate as to whether there was an animus or not. The point that I was seeking to make was whether anything was done by the school to investigate why, whether there was any link between attack number two and attack number one, or whether it was just an off-the-cuff thing, and the fact that it happened to be the claimant who was kicked and punched on both occasions was pure coincidence. I see what is said in paragraph twelve of the witness statement at page forty-one, that all relates to the first incident, which undoubtedly appears to have been a non-premeditated incident that occurred as a result of a perception that somebody was being restrained in an unwarranted way. But it's a small point, but all I'm saying is that we're left with speculation, because nothing was done to investigate whether or not there was any sort of lingering animus between them.
Well, with respect, that would be, that would be a feature that would need to be investigated after the third of November incident, if TH wasn't being removed to another school.
Well, it should have been investigated after the twenty-second of September incident, if there'd been a reparation meeting, and they effectively buried the hatchet.
In a, in a perfect world, with TH being back in school, without another supervening event, it's, one might engage in more speculation, and say that might well have happened, but as it was on the first day back, the mug-throwing incident occurred, there was a restoration meeting after that, after that, there was a period in which TH was in and out of school, then half-term, then the incident of third of November, so there is, while in a perfect world, that restoration meeting undoubtedly would have happened, and who knows, might have done, but for other events overtaking. It didn't, but Catherine Connolly, the head teacher of the school, investigated it and did not feel that this was a targeted attack on the claimant or that it, and the suggestion is, she doesn't say so in terms, but one might read that passages suggesting at any rate that she did not feel there was a personal animus there. Certainly, there's no suggestion from the claimant that he felt that. That would be an important point. My learned friend, I spent a long time going through the history of what in fact happened, because that, of course, goes to the root of, the root of causation, and casts light on breach, and we accept that there was a breach of the ninety-nine regulations.
Those are actionable in the civil courts.
Well, they weren't, no.
Because the way it's pleaded at paragraph three is slightly odd, so it's particulars of negligence, breach of statutory duty, this is page sixty-five of the core bundle, but then just says will refer to, and I know some of these are criminal only and some civil, the ninety-nine regs are...
They are, they've not been actionable since twenty thirteen.
Since twenty, right. They were, weren't they, I think?
Yes, they were, yeah.
And then they were made non-actionable by what provision?
By the, gee, I've my mind, it's Enterprise Act. The Enterprise and Regulatory Reform Act, section sixty-nine.
Reform Act of...
Twenty thirteen, yeah. Came into force in October thirteen, for regulation.
And section sixty-nine, you say? Yeah, so those are not actionable, so when there's a pleading of breach of statutory duty, is there any breach of statutory duty that's pleaded or non-actionable?
No, but what is said by claimants generally is that the standards laid down by the...
Are good indications.
Have an ongoing, have an ongoing effect, because they qualify, or at least they shed light on what the common law duty is.
Well, what a reasonable, prudent and competent school authority would do, yeah.
We're not taking the point that they are completely irrelevant, so far as those regulations do have a carrying over effect.
So this is common law negligence only for the criminal actions of a third party?
So, where all that brings us to, and I realize that time is marching on, is this, that what the claimant had to prove at the trial was not just that there was a breach, but that that had a material contributing effect on the injuries that the claimant suffered. And we say that quite properly, that the judge had information before him which justified his decision that that causal link could not be made, and that justified...
But does he actually say that? Because it's undoubtedly the case that he rejects a case based on removal from the school, and it's undoubtedly the case that he rejects the case that the day itself was mishandled. But his essential conclusion is one of no breach of duty, and there isn't really, is there any analysis of causation at all, save in the two respects that I've mentioned, if you can regard that as causation?
Well, Lord, I gave back, I gave back to this, if I made, paragraphs fifty-six and fifty-seven do deal with that, because the, in essence, what we're left with, once there is no breach in respect of the events on the day, once there is no breach in respect of removing the TH from the school before this assault happens, we are left, really, with a restorative justice meeting, we are left with TH filling out some evaluation sheets, if I can put it in those broad terms, in line with, in line with policy that the school raised it, and/or the school not providing to TH the help that they should have provided him with, when there is no criticism, because the case wasn't developed in this way, of the claimant's own training.
No, there's undoubtedly no case about claimant's own training, but can I just ask my question one more time? So far as the second strand of the case is concerned, the way the judge deals with that is essentially to say the school discharged its duty to TH, therefore there was no breach, and therefore he doesn't need to consider causation. Whereas the claimant's argument is to say that misses out part of the analysis the judge needed to undertake, namely, was there a breach of the duty to the claimant, and if so, was there causation?
But in order to get to that stage, the claimant has to put, set out what the, what the real breaches are in respect of him, and when he's pleaded the case based on the fact that if a proper risk assessment had been carried out, TH would have been removed from the school.
But that wasn't the whole of the case, you see, the judge himself has identified in paragraph two the three strands of the case he had to meet. One is removal before the third of November, secondly, failure to respond adequately to the deterioration by providing adequate support, and thirdly, how they dealt with the matter on the third of November. Now, the judge has undoubtedly addressed one and three. Rereading paragraph fifty-seven, it seems to me that he is focusing still on one, because first of all, he's dealing with the question of whether or not BLC was an appropriate placement, that the, 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 he, the failure to remove him from the school, he says halfway through that paragraph, I'm not persuaded that the failure to remove him from the school before then, i.e. before the date of the incident, amounted to a breach of duty to him, or still less to the claimant. In my judgment, the defendant discharged its duty to him by seeking the support that it did. Now, that's about as near as you get to any addressing of the second strand.
Well, it bears a bit at the end of fifty-five, when he...
Yes.
When he talks, no breach to either to TH or the claimant.
Yeah, I mean, undoubtedly, I make no bones about it, undoubtedly, that, those points could have been more lengthily developed in the judgment, and perhaps we wouldn't be here if they, if they had been. But for, in our respectful submission for this court, it is, it would be permissible and right to look at the overall picture, look at what the school did, take into account the fact that the claimant was properly trained, of course, that's not a feature going forward, take into account in particular the fact that the management of TH on the day of the incident was unimpeachable. And other than information sharing and requiring TH to undergo processes which at least bore some relation to the sorts of outside therapy that he refused to engage in, the totality of that picture makes it very difficult, in our respectful submission, to conclude that there were actions that should reasonably, not in a perfect world, that should reasonably have been taken by the school to protect the claimant. The main protection for the claimant is how, is the manner in which staff are trained to deal with incidents when they arise.
Okay, can I put what I hope is my last question on this topic? Because it might be suggested that the reason why the judge analyzes it in the way that he does is because by this point, he's already rejected the case based on risk assessment. And so I think possibly the judge's analysis... And so I think possibly, the judge's analysis is to say, well, insofar as there's a difference between the duties to the claimant and the duties to the pupil, the difference is manifested in the question of risk assessment. He's rejected the case based on risk assessment at paragraph 44 on the basis that, yes, there was a failure of documentation, but that had no practical effect. And having dismissed the case based on risk assessment at that stage thereafter, his focus is on looking at it in terms of discharge the duty of care for that reason being coextensive as between the pupil and the claimant. Now, whether that's a correct analysis of the judge's thinking or not, let me ask you to assume that that is the judge's reasoning. If it is, do you say that the judge was correct in that analysis?
Yes.
Right.
Because the information that would have been revealed and considered by the process of risk assessment in respect of the risks to the claimant, we say had been revealed by the various processes that we've seen, even sometimes when only glimpses can be seen because of the incompleteness of the records.
How do we know? That's the problem. We don't know. If the focus had been on the danger that he was posing or trigger factors in a school, it's very different from trigger factors at home. If there'd been a risk assessment carried out with specific focus on the school, there may have been other flashpoints that were identified, that were not identified at these other meetings. This is the problem. It's speculative.
It's speculative up to a point, but the school is doing what it can to manage the risk that TH presents. And we see an example of that. Apologies for going back to page 390 of the supplemental bundle, the last page in that bundle of what Laura Coe says. When she's specifically looking at TH's anger on his return to school, and she says four lines up from the bottom of the first paragraph on that page, TH and I discussed coping strategies when he felt angry on his return to school.
Yeah, it's the one document in which that's mentioned, the one document. And that's at an early stage prior to the first incident.
It's also fair to point out that the youth offending team interventions would have been all around that as well.
Yes.
And yes, the point must be made that there are outside agencies involved.
Can I just ask you one question? Suppose, looking at this judgment, you thought, well, the idea that there was no breach of duty by not undertaking risk assessments, which everyone knows ought to be done to protect people, was hopeless. And therefore, we have to look at it ourselves. And suppose you're right, that you can't revisit the question in relation to not excluding him, nor what happened on the day. What do you say to Mr Valentine's two points? First of all, there should have been a meeting on return. Secondly, there should have been a restorative justice meeting. And he says, and I hope this is a fair paraphrase, as I understand your case, he says, look at what they've done in Vale, where they say, well, these are strategies designed, and your own policies, designed to protect the individuals. It hardly lies in your mouth to say, well, because we didn't do it, he can't prove it.
I'll deal with it in this way.
Of course, yeah.
And I will, I'll address Vale head on, that it's an extreme case. It's an extreme case because this was a pupil who was clearly on the autistic spectrum. It's, I think it's a matter of common knowledge that children with autism have particular, it's discussed in the report, have particular difficulties with certain methods of behaviour towards them. That is why, in the Vale case, the TEACH framework was so vital. And it was so vital for the claimant in that case to know how to handle the child within the TEACH framework. As it was, not only had she not been made aware that this child was over a very considerable hurdle, mainly into the autistic spectrum, but also she'd not been trained in the TEACH framework. And it's probably not irrelevant as well in that case, that the head teacher of the school had deliberately falsified documents to suggest that she had been made aware of that and had had the training, or at least had access to the training. That is an extreme case. And it's a clear binary case, we say. That if, very, very clearly, once you have an autistic child, you have got to have the right training to deal with that child properly. You've not been told and you've not been given the training. Then it is far easier for the court to draw the causal link. And in effect, say, well, look, you don't need to prove it. Once you've established breach, you can infer causation. In our case, it's very different, and it's very different for this reason. First of all, TH is not a child who has necessarily got what anybody could classify as a mental health difficulty. He is clearly in an emotional state. It's interesting, perhaps, that Miss Fiddler, for all her disavowal of having any mental health expertise, felt qualified expressly to say that he had a mental health disability.
She may have said that in fairness to her on the basis that there was a referral by the doctor to CAMHS.
Well, a referral to CAMHS is not the same as a diagnosis.
No, it's not the same as a diagnosis, but...
It is a referral that demonstrates that there is something that needs investigating. But then CAMHS have to make a diagnosis. So it would be unfair, in my respectful submission, to characterise that as a diagnostic feature.
But anyway, she's not qualified to express a view as to whether he's got a mental...
She's not qualified to express a view as to whether he's got a mental health disability or not that she purports to. Secondly, the reason that Vale is distinguishable is that in our case, A, the claimant was properly trained in how to deal with this pupil. B, there had been a wealth of, TH was, say, bathed in outside intervention and referral within the confines of what was a difficult and turbulent time and a time period within which it was not easy to present him necessarily with immediate care that he needed. Again, that comes back to the fact that unless you're going to exclude him or remove him from the school, you've got to work with what you can. So then therefore, going to the return to school appointment and the restorative justice meeting. If, what one could make is that quite clearly, a restorative justice meeting on the 5th of October did not prevent the assault on the 3rd of November. So unless one concludes...
But it's different teachers.
It's a different, of course it is. But unless one concludes that there was a connection, which all witnesses, which no witness has suggested, unless one concludes there's a connection between the two assaults in that the second was somehow motivated, provoked, related to the first, of which there is no evidence at all, then the fact that a restorative justice meeting from the 5th of October didn't work may suggest that one sometime after the 22nd of September wouldn't have worked. But in terms of breach there, A, these are the school's own policies, so it's rather different to anything that is specifically based on the 1999 regulations. But also, the... Lost my thread, but the return to school, yes, it's a question of timing. Again, the return to school meeting was scheduled for the 28th of September, couldn't take place because TH didn't come back to school.
In terms of the specific question of whether it was a breach not to have a restorative justice meeting, it is your policy and therefore that's evidence of reasonable, prudent and competent behaviour. Would you say that the failure was a breach or not?
For that meeting, in the circumstances of this case, when it is a fluid situation and when TH is in and out of school and when, on the first day he comes back, another incident occurs which requires and can be met with immediate action, then in my respectful submission, it doesn't necessarily follow that there was a breach of duty not to have a restorative...
I said it doesn't necessarily follow. I didn't ask that. I asked what your submission was, whether it was a breach.
I say the judge was, we're saying it was not necessarily a breach. I can't make a positive case on that because the case wasn't quite put in that way. There has to be something that would suggest that one of those two relatively, one of those two actions, which are far less significant in terms of causation than removal from the school and management on the day, that's one can suggest that those alone would have made the difference and have some grounds for thinking that they would have made the difference or prevented this assault. In my submission, the causal link can't be made. And that's why it's very different to Vale, because the breach in Vale was absolutely central to the prevention of assault. And a return to school interview to make the child reflect on his behaviour and a restorative meeting to make the child apologise to the teacher, those are far softer provisions and far softer mechanisms that one can well see why they would be part of a school policy because it's a matter of politeness and good management of the pupil. But unlike in Vale, in my respectful submission, they don't go to the root of what is designed to prevent an assault of this kind. And in my respectful submission, the judge was right to conclude broadly that there was nothing else the school could reasonably have done. Do you have any further questions? No, we don't. Thank you very much. Mr Valentine, any reply?
My lord, yes. A corrective, and I'm not sure to my lady friend perhaps elided the point, and I think perhaps others have elided the point, that the team around the child and the child in need meetings are not arranged by the school. They are meetings that the school has a right to attend and attends to them. Looking at the judge's judgment, it appears that he misunderstood that. Page 36 of the core bundle. He states, at paragraph five, "The school provides different levels of support for children and their families depending on their assessed need." The basic structure is described by Wendy Nichols. Her description is on page 21 of the supplemental bundle. At paragraph six, where she says, "I confirm that there are different levels of support that can be provided to a family young person. Initially, there is universal services which provide standard support in the fields of education and health. The next level of support is entitled team around the family, which is when additional support is provided by multi-agency professionals." And then when one looks at the notes, it seems to be Roe Bamford from BLC, who is always identified first. So she's the one chairing it, so to speak. And at several of these meetings, it doesn't appear that there's anybody actually from the school present.
There's one where there's apologies sent in, yeah.
Indeed, my lord, there is. And I think that one of them, it's noted that I won't be able to attend the TAC meeting. Yes, I'm just looking at... Through them. They're certainly not present at all at the meetings.
Is there any significance in the difference between TAF, which Nichols refers to, and TAC, team around the family and team around the child or not?
My knowledge is based essentially on what Wendy Nichols states, which is at page 21. There was some discussion about the child being downgraded. Yes, CIN is a higher level of support than team around the family.
But these notes are team around the child. I don't know if there's any significance to that.
No, I'm afraid I don't know the answer to that. She refers to, ah, paragraph eight.
It's reduced paragraph eight. Team around the child seems to be lower than team around...
The family.
The family.
Yes, I think it goes child in need, team around the family, team around the child. As the mother and kids be engaging with support services. But I think it's important to bear that in mind because I think the judge's implicitly seems to assume that this is with the school that was arranging all of these meetings and arranging all of these referrals, which...
Basically social services, is it?
It's basically social services, my lady, exactly that. So they can't take the benefit of that. To the extent, obviously, that they assist and do what is asked of them and provide notes to them. There's no actual specific reference to the note my learned friend says was prepared, which appears at page 385. So there is a sort of mystery underlying that note as to what exactly it was for. The importance of acknowledging that they aren't school systems and school meetings is the extent to which the judge was of the view that everything that could have been done for this child was being done for this child, which doesn't answer the question of the duty to the claimant, of course. But it does suggest that rather less was being done by the school on its own back than perhaps the judge had the impression, based on his misunderstanding, that these were school systems. And that also does go to the issue of the...
So are you saying that he's made an error of fact at paragraph five?
Well, he has. I'm afraid I didn't pick this up.
Because I was going to say, it doesn't appear in your grounds of appeal.
It doesn't, no. But I mean, it's quite clearly stated by Wendy Nichols that this was organised by multidisciplinary authorities. And I hadn't appreciated that the judge had formed that wrong impression.
Does it matter?
To some extent, it doesn't matter, no. Because what obviously the claimant is saying is that it is about the duty to the claimant.
Exactly.
Yes.
And you put front and centre the lack of the risk assessment, which is all about the duty to the claimant.
Exactly that. Exactly that, my lord, yes. So, no, I accept that. I'll move on. Just one separate point about the diagnosable mental health. Page 125 of the core bundle.
125.
125, my lord, yes. Well, I do beg your pardon, 123, I can't read my own handwriting. Paragraph 28. Paragraph 3.14 of the Mental Health and Behaviour in Schools provides that "When schools suspect that a pupil is having mental health difficulties..." So TH doesn't have to have a diagnosable mental health problem. There has to be some difficulties. And the importance of that is that we know that from April 2015, he is making comments such as he wishes he was dead. That is noted, in fact, on page 293, at G to H. And this is in relation to the knife incident. "Mum on that occasion suggested the youth offending team, which as far as I can see, nothing was ever done about. CAMHS was discussed but not actually actioned until October. TH was noted to have been saying that he wishes he was dead." And that is as early as April 2015. My learned friend made a lot about the short time span and they had requested that the TAC meetings of the 13th of July, 14th of August, 16th of September and the 22nd of October appeared in the supplemental appeal bundle. And they were duly inserted in the supplemental appeal bundle. Now, there were, of course, notes a lot earlier than that. And they are referenced in a number of places. At page 93 of the core bundle, which is my summary of the notes in the skeleton argument for the trial. "A case conference report dated 11th of December 2014. Behaviour deteriorated. Shared examples: refusal, damage, disruption, swearing, shouting, tiredness, petulance. 3rd of February, angry, all his anger outburst, worrying. He was challenged to walk away from the situation. 18th of March, unruly and disruptive aggressive behaviour. Generally considered a kindly sensitive child, and so this behaviour is unexpected of him. Concerns had been arrested a step time from CIN to CAF, might be premature. 22nd of April 2015, noted that his behaviour was causing increasing concern. Threatened a boy with a knife and waved the knife around home. Very unpredictable in school over the last couple of months, often being totally unreasonable. Father had cancer." And then we get to the 13th of July. I just wanted to make that clear, my lord, because it's, this behaviour deterioration had started a lot earlier in July and there was ample time to address it via the mechanisms that the school had at their disposal in relation to behaviour policies, even if the specific risk assessment for violence, which appears on appendix five, had not been triggered until the 22nd of September 2015 incidents. One minor point, the strengthening families course. This was specifically mentioned during closing submissions to the judge. And he remarks at page 184B, "Can I just, while we're at it, have just a look at my note? I'm not sure what this is at the moment. Strengthening families course is good, and she described it as a massive step forward. It was relevant to us having confidence. I do not have anything about six weeks noted there, be it..." But there we are, and neither did I, just on the top of the page above. And it couldn't possibly have been six weeks because it started on the 16th of September and it had been completed by the 22nd of October. But there we are. There was this issue, Mr Vaughan seemed to recall something about six weeks, but there was no evidence for it. Certainly, the judge didn't have that evidence. I didn't have that evidence, and it couldn't possibly have been six weeks.
Closer to four, you say?
Well, there was no evidence heard about it. We don't know...
Well, you know when it started and we know when it finished, so we can do the maths.
Well, yes, it had finished by the 22nd of October, my lady, yes. But we don't know what it was really about. That's, yes, just one very minor point. Mrs Connolly, it was said that undertook a proper investigation.
She was the head teacher, was she?
She was the head teacher, yes. And that was referred to at page 41, I believe. Yes, paragraph 12. "On this occasion, I confirm that TH perceived the claimant to have assaulted his friend when he was playing the pupil. This was a defensive-type activity on the part of TH and not a personal attack against the claimant." And that's what she says. Now, the incident report is at appendix two, page 321 of the supplemental bundle, and is detailed and thoughtful. Description of events leading up to an incident. De-escalation techniques used, behaviour, consequence, including sanctions taken or imposed. Then there's the body map. And then there's a life-space interview, what I need to be held, why I need to be held, what I could do to avoid the situation next time, what were the consequences of my behaviour, were they fair? And this takes us back to the mechanism of risk avoidance and risk minimisation that lie behind the structure that the school had considered should be conducted. And they simply didn't do any of that. So with greatest respect, a reference in passing in the head teacher's witness statement to, while we spoke to him about it and this is what it was, isn't pass muster in my respectful submission. May I just turn my back? Unless I can assist the court any further.
No, thank you very much. Well, counsel are to be commended for completing their submissions within the day. You won't be surprised to hear that you've given us quite a lot to think about and we shall therefore be reserving our judgment. I can't promise when it will become available, but obviously we will do it as soon as pressure of other work permits. When the judgment is available, it will be circulated in draft in the usual way for you to correct typographical errors, grammatical infelicities and any obvious and incontestable factual mistakes, but not to re-argue the case. It is likely that once finalised, the judgment will be handed down remotely. Whether it's handed down remotely or in court, no attendance will be required. At that point, we would invite you to try and agree a consequential order. If you can agree a consequential order, well and good. If you can't, please make brief written submissions as to what consequential order is made. And we can appreciate that there may be some room for argument as to costs in particular. If the appeal is successful, perhaps on a limited basis. Obviously, if it's dismissed, then the argument may be a little more straightforward. But you will see when, what happens on that when you get the judgment. Is there anything else that we need to take consideration of at this stage? Very good. Thank you all.